Do this thing. Everybody ready? Ready to go? Okay, I'm gonna call the regular October 8th meeting of the Planet, C- Congress Planning Commission to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Alborn?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Uh, here.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
And Chair Lepage?
Here also. Okay, I want to welcome everybody here today. It's a beautiful day out there. Beautiful Autumn Day. Okay, uh, first item on the agenda are the public appearances. Uh, members of the public are invited to make comments to the Planning Commission, uh, which are, uh, regarding, uh, matters of municipal concern. Your comments are listed, limited to three minutes, and these are items which are not on the agenda today, and your items, your comments must be in the context of the Brown Act. So at this time, I'd like to invite anybody in the chamber or online who would like to come forward, make any comments about items which are not on our agenda today. Anybody online? Okay. Nobody coming up in the, in the chamber? So we, yes? Uh, well, we have announcements. You want to make another announcements? Sure. Why don't you do another, why don't you do another mouse announcements which are next? So go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm, I have, uh, outside of these, this chamber, I don't have a forum to share information with my fellow commissioners, uh, and so I'll use this time for that purpose. And if, uh, anything I say, perhaps commissioners would like that to be included in a future discussion and agendized, then we can do that. Um, my first announcement, my first comment has to do with last night's city council and the water discussion. Um, I would encourage all of my fellow planning commissioners to watch that discussion. It starts at, uh, the timestamp is three hours and forty-nine minutes. Um, they, uh, raised some very interesting, uh, points, and, um, the council did not make a decision. They are going to, uh, return to this subject in November, and, um, I don't know if the commission wants to add that, um, to our own agenda for, uh, further discussion in the future. So that's my first comment. Um, my second comment, um, has to do with our upcoming, uh, October twentieth meeting for where the Planning Commission will see a presentation on the housing element, the proposed amendment to the housing element. And this is really a comment, um, to staff. I don't know if this is possible or not. Um, the, uh, the, the topics that we are going to be reviewing, it's rather dense. I mean, there's quite a bit of information that we will be receiving, both in, uh, chapter two and appendix C. And so, um, rather than receive that information three days prior, or have whatever the ordinary, um, distribution is, I don't know if it's possible to possibly receive clean and redlined copies sooner. And that really is a question, of course, for you. I don't know what the regulations are. Okay? My third comment is that I have requested to staff, um, that the Planning Commission have a special meeting, uh, to do a critical review on the subject of parking in town. And, um, the reason for this, um, I would, I would like the Planning Commission to do a review of parking in general, but also more specifically, um, to include a conversation about program three point one point E that's in the housing element. Um, both the adopted twenty twenty-four housing element and the amendment, both include this program. It has a reduced parking requirement. We already have a very well-known and extensively documented parking scarcity in this town, and whether we continue with our adopted element or we, um, succeed in an amendment, a significant number of additional residential cars are going to be, are going to need parking on our streets. So, um, I'm asking, um, for additional conversation, uh, with staff and then in front of the Planning Commission at sometime in the future. And then my, my last comment also has to do with, uh, the housing element and the fifty-nine programs that are part of it. Um, once approved and certified by the state, those fifty-nine programs, uh, require implementation at the city level. Twenty-seven of them or so are, are either past due or they're going to be due this coming December. Um, in, in general, the program implementation process goes like this. Staff researches the implementation, drafts a proposal, presents that either to city council or if appropriate, first to planning commission and then to city council. Um, for example, uh, in, there is an, uh, there is a housing element program that calls for the creation of a public-
Excuse me, Commissioner Albert.
Yes, sir.
You're getting into a pretty comp, you know, uh, ex- uh, discussion about some of which we're gonna be re- reviewing at the, on the twentieth meeting, so.
Would you like to do this, then?
Uh, well, you know, if you wanna, if, you know, this, I just think you need to summarize this because, uh, these are all good topics, but they need to come under the discussion, the public discussion. This isn't agendized tonight.
Correct.
And so, we're kind of crossing over into public discussion, comments and stuff, and that's, we really shouldn't be doing that during the announcements, so, uh, you know, I mean, they're all good comments, but they need to happen in an agendized meeting, which is coming up on the twentieth, specific to the housing element.
Fair enough. I accept that, Chair. Thank you. And that ends my comment.
All right, thank you. Are there any other announcements from staff, or?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature, um, and do not require independent action. Uh, any members of the commission or the public can request an item, be pulled for further discussion or questions. Uh, we have, uh, four items on the consent agenda tonight, and, um, items one, one of them is the September, uh, minutes for the Planning Commission, September, September tenth, and item number two is the September tenth special planning commission meeting, and then items three and four are the, uh, monthly, uh, activity reports for the planning building department for August and September. Uh, is there anyone, any, any members of the commission have any questions? Want any items pulled, corrections? Okay, anybody in the members of the public have any, uh, questions or want any items pulled for further discussion? Anybody online? Okay, in that case, I will make a single motion that we adopt items one, two, three, and four on the consent agenda.
I can second that.
Okay, can we have, uh, roll call, please?
Commissioner Alborn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair Lepage?
Yes, motion is carried. Okay, the next item is orders of business, but we don't have any listed orders of business tonight, so we will move on to the public hearings. Uh, before we start the public hearings, uh, typically organized where, um, staff will give their report, uh, commissioners will ask questions for clarification, and then open it up for public comments, public comments. The applicant, uh, will allow five minutes to make their initial presentation. Public has three minutes to make their comments, and the applicant will can come back and answer questions that arise from public comment or from the commissioners. So having said that, uh, the first item on the public hearings tonight is a director's referral. This is direct referral to the Planning Commission to discuss the permanent operation history of A W, better known as Oshuck's Cocktail Oyster Bar, and consideration of an amendment to a used permit that was, uh, granted to it originally for its operation. Can we have staff report, or this, the, uh, director's report?
Yes, um, thank you, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, Anna Jeanette, um, with Community Planning and Building here to present on the director's referral for the Oshuck's discussion. Um, so today's discussion will go over the background, including historical use, permitting, um, history, determinations that were made. Um, we'll cover the current operation, um, specific sections of the Carmel by the Sea Municipal Code, and, um, seek Planning Commission's direction. So for the record, the, um, property is located off of Ocean Avenue, three southwest of San Carlos. Zoning is Central Commercial or CC. It's a little bit of the background, um, historical use. Um, staff was able to find information, um, identifying that this bar went back, um, prior to nineteen seventy-four, was the watering hole lounge. Um, there's also information in the nineteen ninety-four use permit that identified that the bar was Maxwell McFly's. Um, both of these uses were established prior to the requirement of a use permit, um, in the Carmel Municipal Code. Um, and the you, the, that existing use had no kitchen or food preparation. Um, subsequent to releasing the staff report, the property owner reached out to staff and, um, had requested that the drinking establishment, um, use permit be considered to me, to be maintained, and staff will discuss that, um, later on in, in subsequent slides. So the, the most recent permit, um, is from nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four. It's, uh, permit, use permit number ninety-three dash forty-five. It listed that the primary use was a drinking place, um, which maintained that existing drinking establishment use, um, prior to the need of a permit. The ancillary use was a eating place. Um, that allowed introduction of limited food cells, um, with no, um, food, with no full kitchen. Hours of operation were Sunday through Thursday and Friday and Th- and Saturday, as shown on the slide. And there was information or narrative in the staff report from the early nineties that stated that the addition of food dilutes potential impacts of a bar and, and it offers a benefit. And that was one of the reasons or the arguments for, um, approval of allowing food within a drinking place. So to continue with, um, background permitting, the use permit was approved ninety-three, ninety-four. Then in nineteen, uh, ninety-four, there was a building permit that was issued by the city that allowed a, um, the, the items listed on the left and as also shown on, um, the slide here as part of the site, or prop- part of the plans. Um, this presented, um, an inconsistency with the approval of the use permit as condition number two stated that it does not authorize, um, the, the owner to establish a full kitchen with stove, grill, or oven, and that, um, equipment was limited to microwave, gas steamer, soup prep, and refrigeration. So then in nineteen ninety-six, also shown on this slide, um, the city issued another building permit for further remodeling of a commercial kitchen and added a stock pot burner and a gas fryer. On the left-hand side of this slide, you'll see a snippet of a, um, plan check correction sheet that was provided to, um, the property owner or the applicant. And it's, this sheet stated that, um, initially, the correction was that the applicant submit an application to the planning department for an amendment of the use permit. And subsequent to that, the use permit was crossed out, and it was replaced with business license only. And then, uh, the note with asterisk was added stating that submit a new application for business license for a full-line restaurant and sign zoning compliance statement for eating places. And that was done April twenty-third of nineteen and ninety, I think that's a seven, nineteen ninety-seven. So based on this information, it was my understanding that the applicant was initially told to amend the use permit, which would have been the proper vehicle to amend the land use entitlement, but for some reason, a decision was made that only a business license would be required to, to allow both uses to occur. Then in two thousand and eight, the city issued yet another, um, building permit that, um, just a snippet of the plans on the left, um, added additional cooking facilities, salamander, boiler, griddle, oven, fryer, and I don't know if this was a replacement or it was an additional stock pot burner. Um, then, uh, in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, the ownership changed hands, um, which required the new operator to obtain a business license from the city. Business li- and a business license twenty-three zero four one was issued by the city, and it listed that the primary use was a full-line restaurant and the ancillary use was a drinking place. It also had the original use permit attached, but makes no mention as to, you know, is it legal, non-conforming, um, and things of that nature. So as, as approved through the building permit and as, I believe what was understood by the operator, the use continued. Um, staff received correspondence, um, questioning whether or not the operation was legal and whether or not the operation was in violation of the conditions of approval and the findings and the fact of the, the use permit resolution. And that's what, that's what brings us here today. Um, there were other determinations that staff was able to find. In September twenty-two, two thou- September twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, the Planning Commission, um, received a report from staff, um, requesting the commission to designate which of the three drinking places in, um, the city are the official three drinking places. There was no resolution, but in the minutes, um, the minutes stated that the Planning Commission upheld the, the determination by staff, and that Oshuck's was one of the three drinking places, and the vote was from four to zero with one member absent. Then in two thousand and twenty-three, this was around the time that the business, um, the ownership changed hands and the business license, um, the newest business license was issued. There was a, there was correspondence to the property owner, the property owner's representative, um, from the direct, the then their director of community planning building, stating that the city memorialized the additional cooking equipment through the latest building permit from two thousand and eight, and that the current menu with the, with the business license was approved as part of the two thousand and eight building permit, and that created a legal non- non-conforming situation. Again, there isn't a clear line where, um, where we can point to saying that this is the operating permit and the operating permit is amended to match what we've approved through building permits, what we've approved through, um, a business license and how they're currently operating. So we're, we're here today to, to get the direction from the Planning Commission. Um, just a, uh, this is just a quick slide of the current op- operations. I'm sure many of you are probably aware of how Osh- Oshuck's operates, but there are tabletops, and then there's a bar, and then, um, there's an area where there's a oyster bar. And then just to go over municipal code, I'll go through three sections. Um, this section is the section specifically for drinking places. Um, there's a minimum distance, there is a location, um, has to be located within, um, blocks numbered seventy through seventy-seven. Oshuck's currently meets these two. Um, there's a maximum number of three, as determined by the, by the Planning Commission in twenty fifteen, Osh- Oshuck's is one of the three. Um, and then it refer, this section refers to another section that we will be going through, um, in a few slides. Um, this is a two-part slide. This is the section of the code that speaks to a full-line restaurant. Um, a full-line restaurant, alcoholic beverages shall be subordinate to the, to the primary use. Now, whether or not the, the, based off the testimony of, of the applicant and the operator, whether or not the Planning Commission considers this a drinking place or a full-line restaurant, um, A comes into play. Whether, if it's a drinking place, they can serve food, but it does not have to be, the food does not have to be sub- or the, the beverage does not have to be sub- subordinate to the food. Um, that's one of the key differences. Um, they meet B, C, um, D is a little unclear. If you count the total number of seats at the bar, it is over twenty percent, but if you don't count the seats that are at the oyster bar, which is not directly in front of the bartender, then they do count, they do meet the twenty percent. Um, in it, in any case, there is the end of this se- section that says, if you are over the twenty percent, then you have to meet the standards in subsection, um, I two, which is the drinking place, um, section, and as, um, demonstrated, they do meet that as well. They meet, um, E, and they meet, um, F through K. So this is the section that, um, the drinking place section refers to, and it applies to all eating and drinking establishments. And, uh, the current operation, um, as they've been operating since the nineties, um, meets, um, all, it meets A, B, and C. So, um, going over the options, the, the staff report that was, was, um, provided to the Planning Commission laid out the options for the, the second one listed here, um, which is amend the use permit, um, remove drinking establishment, um, and, um, allow them to operate as they're currently operating, but as a full-line restaurant. Um, after speaking with the representative of the property owner, that is not their desire, and, and you know, they are well within their right to maintain their use permit. Um, things to think about, though, um, if option two is what the Planning Commission, um, directs staff to move forward with, is then that frees up, um, another use permit for a drinking establishment. For option one, this is the desire of the property owner, um, and they request to amend the use permit to maintain both the drinking place and the full-line restaurant use. Um, in, in terms of the information that, that, that staff was able to find, that is, is, seems to be, seems to appear very consistent with the past practices of the city, although it is not, it, it's not directly written that this, yes, will only have a building or a business license, but this is both a drinking place and a full-line restaurant. So it's still a bit of a mystery. Even in the twenty fifteen determination of the Planning Commission, it identifies it as a, it div- it identifies Oshuck's as a drinking establishment with limited food, even though there's past history showing all of the building permits that allowed them to, to ho- to operate in excess of, of the strict letter of the, the conditions of approval and the findings of fact. So, um, I wanted to present this. I believe the property owner, um, and operator are both here to, you know, kind of explain their understanding of the permitting, and they may have way more history than I have been able to, to dig through paper files. Um, but in terms of my position as the director, it is much more cleaner to amend a permit properly rather than have memos or make, you know, determinations without something that I can point to and say, yes, you, there is no violation. You are in fact consistent with your, your approval. And that's, that's my goal, really, until I retire. So that's, um, that, um, is the end of my presentation, but I am available for questions if you have any.
Okay, I, I, go ahead. Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions, too. Go ahead.
Um, are there any other drinking, um, establishments that also have full-line restaurant?
Not to my knowledge. There are restaurants that serve alcohol.
Right. But, but as far as, we only have three full, three drinking establishments, and of those three, only Oshuck's is the only one that has both of those, too?
Yes, um, Barmel was brought up once, but Barmel and Barmel Separate Club are two separate.
Yeah, they're two separate. Okay, thank you.
So my quest, is that good? Okay, my question is, uh, if we amended their use permit and so they were a full-line res- restaurant, then they would no longer have the, the drinking, uh, s- uh, place?
That, that is-
So that would free up another drinking place, 'cause the, the code specifies, where there's three allowed in the city. And I think I was involved in the twenty fifteen. I was on the commission then.
You were.
And that was in the, I, I believe it was in the context of Barmel. At that time, that's, that's why it was identified, Oshuck's was identified as one of the three, the third being, uh, Sadie's. And so those were, those were three bars, and those were, those were s- specific drinking establishments. They may have some, um, ancillary food being served, but they were, they operated as a drinking establishment. And in that context also, their, their hours of operation were, were set up in the context of a drinking establishment, so they were allowed later.
All three.
As you notice, that this, this, uh, Oshuck's has, has later hours of operation.
That's correct.
So, so my question is, does that free up another drinking establishment permit for, to be applied for?
If, if it was determined that, if the Planning Commission determines that this does not meet the definition and intent of a drinking establishment, and then directed staff to, you know, we now have to clean up the books, it's still up to the property owner to say, well, we will pull back and we will be, we will fall in line with the use permit that allowed limited food as an ancillary use. That would not free up the use permit. Only if the property owner chose to move forward with an amendment and said, we don't need the use permit for a drinking establishment and we're fine with a full-line restaurant. Um, in terms of land use, there's no change in baseline, and I, staff would be able to make findings either way, whether it's an amendment to clean the books, call it a drinking place and restaurant, or clean the books and call it just a full-line restaurant, because there's no, there's no change in baseline. Um, but to answer your question, it, it depends on-
Well, it's something, yeah, what you're saying, if the applicant chooses to bring their, their operation in line with a drinking place, then they're gonna have to eliminate the full-line restaurant, you know, operation that they're conducting at this time. So they're gonna have to bring that back into conformance to what was approved. It seems like the city kind of dropped the ball here. There wasn't coordination between the building department and the planning department, because there were specific conditions put on this business back in nineteen ninety-seven or whenever, and then through a series of building permits, they built out a full kitchen, and they weren't supposed to have a full kitchen with the first, with the, the, the original conditions of the permit. So that's what enabled the process gradually to shift over into a full-line restaurant operation. So at this point, you know, it, the, what the staff is, is saying is that they're not operating in conformance with their use permit.
They're not, uh, operating in conformance with their use permit. There was a planner that signed off on the building permit, um, and also the, the cryptic notation saying only bu- business license is, is required, but there's no meat to any of those.
But staff's position right now that they weren't in operation with the original use permit.
Either way, it needs to either fix the use permit.
Even if, even if planner signed off on it, it seems to me that, you know, where we are, we're in our, anyway, so i- it sounds to me like you're saying if they, they go with amended full-line restaurant use permit, which allows them to have a bar, they can serve alcohol.
Yes.
And many restaurants in town do have bars, and they serve, but, but it's, but it is, uh, supportive of the, of the restaurant, of the, of the, the restaurant- supportive of, of the restaurant, of the, of the, the restaurant side of the business.
Yes, the planning commission can make a suite of options. They could find that the way they're running is consistent with both a drinking place and a full-line restaurant. The planning commission could find that a full-line restaurant is, only a full-line restaurant is more appropriate, but allow them to continue to keep their hours of operation. The planning commission can find that the full-line restaurant is inconsistent with the drinking place, and that, then they would have to pull back and, and, and remove some of the, the facilities that were installed and reduce the, their menu.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, further questions? Commissioner Albern, your question.
I have a, a comment and a question. My, my comment, well, which is a question, is why would the city have use permits if the uses don't match the findings on the permit? That makes, that just makes no sense to me and, and adds to confusion and loss of time and loss of money. So that's a question you don't have to answer. The question I would like an answer to is, should the planning commission see, see to it that it makes more sense for this use permit to be a full-line restaurant, rather than for a drinking establishment? What, if any, physical modifications to the building would be necessary under that new use?
They would have to do a tenant improvement and remove the, the cooking facilities that were installed inconsistent with the original use permit.
Oh, so that's if they, if they want to maintain the use permit that they have right now, they would have to de-install the kitchen, or the cooking facilities.
They'd have limited.
And then if, if, the flip, if the use permit would change to a full-line restaurant, what modifications would be needed to the building with that change of use?
No modifications.
Thank you.
I do also want to keep in mind, going back to the section of this code, I just want to make it abundantly clear that in the regulations of drinking place, in no way does it say that the providing food and the sale of food, that is not prohibited in a drinking place, in terms of our code.
Right, but it, but food service would have to be ancillary to the drinking?
Yes.
Okay, which means that the existing menu and cooking facilities would have to be reduced?
It would, and then in the section where, where our code talks about ancillary uses, you're limited up to 10%.
Okay.
The planning commission has the ability to increase that percentage. You could do 50/50, you could do 60/40. It's up to the, the planning commission's discretion.
But that is significant, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any more questions from commissioners, for staff, the director? Okay, thank you. All right, does someone invite the applicant to come forward and make their presentation?
Yes, hello commissioners and staff. Thank you for being here. My name's John Plastini. I represent the Dowd family. I've managed the building for 37 years. We're fully involved with the history of how this unfolded. Give you a little more history, before, before Maxima Flies was there, it was Whitney's. The grandfather built the building, the Dowd Arcade, in 1961. Whitney's was a cocktail lounge restaurant in the 30s, 40s. You can even go on eBay and get one of their matchbooks. Situation is, is that when the building was built in 61, Whitney stayed in the place that, right now is A W Shucks. It's always been a drinking establishment. The family's always had that land entitlement use. We've made it clear to the city every time we went for a permit that we wanted to retain that use. And at any point, they would say, that needed to be eliminated, we wouldn't have gone through the planning that we had. Again, looking at a drinking establishment, I'm a little concerned. Why am I here tonight? Well, because Commissioner LaPage, you hit it right on the head. Somebody else wants a bar in town, and it's a drinking establishment. I can tell you from experience, when we had Maxima Flies there, a straight drinking establishment or drinking place poses a lot of problems. There's a lot of irresponsible drinking that goes on. We made the determination to soften it on Ocean Avenue, and the commission and city embraced it. With the food services, you don't have as much of that behavior, and it's worked very, very well. And along the lines, they asked to expand that. We came to the city, worked with the planning department, worked with the building department. It was approved. In 2015, it was established as a drinking establishment. It's been in the pine cone time and time again. When the new owners took over, I met with Brandon Swanson, the planning director, and we went over this dilemma. Why does our land entitlement use not match the building or, or the business license? Why does it say restaurant, bar? Why wasn't it bar, restaurant, as it was originally? And they really couldn't answer that question, but it moved on. Now we're left with this dilemma where the family would like to retain that land use entitlement. We have a tenant that purchased it. We have a letter from the building director stating that it was legal and non-conforming. This is back in 2023. I thought it was all over. Why are we here? I know why we're here. There was an inquiry, and you're absolutely right. One more person in town, like a drinking establishment. Commission, you need to decide, look at what the drinking establishment would be. Do you want another one of those in town? I think we've been great custodians of the drinking. We've made people maybe a little more responsible. Do you have a lot of problems made there, your Shucks? No. I've contacted the police. The property, I don't want to mention names, but I've been called a numerous times, because I, I, I assisted in that property, between drunks in the back, puking in the alleys, cigarettes, drug use. I, I think when that other comes available, you're gonna be left with the decision, number one, who gets it? And if you strip us of that, do we have any value, or you just take it away? Something that the family's had for close to 100 years, and you're gonna take that away? I don't know how this is gonna unfold, but I think we've been, we've worked with the city time and time, always asked for permission. We followed the rules. If there was a mistake made, I would have corrected it back then, but I, I don't know where we're at, but I'm adamant that we do not want to lose our drinking establishment use. And that's a land use entitlement. I don't know how all this unfolds, but I'll leave it up to the commission to decide that, but I'm just telling you, our situation, how we wound up here, I'm surprised we're here. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Are, are you, are you with the property or the business?
I'm the, uh, Oshuck's owner.
Okay, come on up. I just wanted to see which, what, how you're affiliated with it.
I'm affiliated, definitely.
Paying the bills.
Yeah, I am. My name is Karen Bassi. My husband and I own Oshuck's. We purchased it two years ago. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and nice to meet you all. To give you a little background real quick, I've been, I've owned a home here for 21 years. A secondary home, but now it's my primary. We have a very passionate interest in this community. We love it here, we want to retire here, and it's been a wonderful community to, to be a part of. I'd like to thank Anna. I've talked with her over the last month or so. She has given me some understanding of what's going on. I'm a little confused, I still am. We're getting background with lots of interesting history. When I purchased the business, I'm still maintaining the, the way it was operated, is being operated, has been operated for 20, 30 years. We've maintained our staff, our relationships with the community, our customers, our, our locals, they, they just love our establishment. I have to thank Micah Michelle, who are former owners. We are in insurance. We insured the facility for 18 years prior to purchasing it. We were under the impression that status quo, this is what we're buying. I have a little fear factor now that the value of my purchase is not gonna be maintained if we have to change it now. I just wanted to have it status quo, everything's running smoothly. But I have to side with John over here, and understanding the importance of maintaining a drinking establishment. I by no means want to cause any ruffling of any feathers. That's not what I'm about. I just ask that you consider my investment, John's investment. I don't know where the error or the ball got dropped back in 1993. Things have changed a lot in 32 years. Our community has changed. Drinking isn't as prominent as it was. Eating does subsidize our income. Having to reduce it, maybe a minimal amount, that shouldn't be a problem. I'm willing to work with you. But I, I agree with John. I'm not quite sure I want to give up that drinking after all. I was kind of under the impression that I could work and continue the way things are without interrupting my, my liquor license or anything like that, which is true. I mean, I, I, you've been really great with helping me understand some of it, but I didn't know the depth of what's going on. And I don't want to be a, a problem at all. I just want to be a happy business owner, and I want my clients to be happy. And if it gets changed in some way, the community's gonna be calling out. I know that for sure, because we've got a very good establishment going on and a wonderful reputation. And that's something that has been acquired over time. We're an iconic establishment, we're very well-run, we're mature people. We are taxpayers, we're, we're just, we're all here trying to, to go with the flow of, you know, rules and regulations. We're doing the best we can, and this is a major hiccup, might I say. Had I known this, maybe if Micah Michelle had known that there was a problem, we may, may be in a different place right now. But I'm concerned about my investment, which is only two years young, and I want to be here for the longevity, but I have to be able to maintain income as well. And so to take something away from me that I purchased based on its register and our, our books, and that affects me, it really does. So I'm asking that you guys consider all aspects here and help work with us, and we'll work with you in whatever way we can to kind of make everybody happy, if at all possible here, so. And I know, John, thank you for sharing that information. That gave, gave me a little bit of longevity of it all here. Very respectfully submitted to you guys my little speech here. I don't have a lot to say when it comes to the rules and regulations. I'm, even though I'm here 21 years, this is all new to me, but I'm willing to do what I have to do to comply. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I wanted to ask you a couple of questions, just, just so we got a better understanding of what your operation is. So currently, do you, you give the, the customers menus at the table?
We either, yes, we have a, only 49 seats, so we have a host that seats them, and yes, we give them.
So you have some tables on the floor, and then you have seating at the bar?
Correct.
And the bar is, part of the bar is just facing, I guess, the drinks part, and the part that is facing the oyster bar, correct?
We have a long line, so yes, we have a oyster bar and the bar facing.
So a section of the bar, they're, they're facing the, the oysters and the preparation of the oysters. Okay, and then, and then you give, you give your, the one seat at the table, you give a menu? You bring a menu to them?
Yes, if they ask for one, they have a menu.
You give a menu, a menu to them? And then when they place their order, does a waitress or a waiter come out and take their order?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And so if you operated, if, if you were designated or permitted for use permit as a full-line restaurant with a bar, how, how would you, and I'm not challenging you, I just want to get a better understanding of how you see this, because you, you say it's gonna affect your investment. So how would it change your operation that would, that would affect your, your investment? You would still be, you would still be able to operate as you are now, because currently, you're pretty much operating as a full-line restaurant with a bar.
Correct.
So how would it change it? And, and, and affect you financially?
And, and technicalities, if, for resale, I'm, I'm concerned for that, too. So right now, you know, the ratio and the way that business has been, you know, it's finally picking up again, which is fabulous, since COVID was, you know. We do make probably a five-to-one, four-to-one percentage of food versus the alcohol right now at this point, because.
So the alcohol's 20% of your business?
Right now, it's 20, 30% probably, 30, maybe 35%. It depends on the season as well. Also, as you know, wine sales are down by 30, 35%. People aren't drinking the way they were, so that's where it's gonna affect me if I can't feed them, because that's a big part of my income, is to offset some of that with the income. So if there's a way for us to be, you know, 50, 40, 60, 50, 20, I, I don't know, whatever it is that we need to do.
Well, it kind of sounds like what you're saying is that
I'm flexible.
you wouldn't want to operate as strictly a drinking place with just ancillary food being served, which would be, you know, a very limited menu, and maybe soup, some sandwiches, or whatever. You know, it sounds like what you're saying is having the flexibility to have the bar and, and, and the full menu really gives you the most value and flexibility to your business.
It does, and again, I have to restate that when we purchased the business based on how it's operating currently, which we have not changed at all, we did a little something at first, and of course, a little hiccup was like, oh yeah, that's not acceptable by the community, so that's fine. Changed a recipe, okay? It's back, it's original. I don't want to change it, but if I have to to maintain the drinking establishment, I don't want to give that up, not for John. I understand that. I understand that there's only three. I had that, I voiced that with you. I was wondering if it would affect us. You said, no, it shouldn't. But I really need to consider myself, you know, what direction is that I'm willing to choose? Whether I'm gonna choose to do full-service restaurant, which that's kind of what I was leaning towards, but in the value of things in the long run, I, will it affect me? I need to know more. I need to know more information. I don't have enough education on the history of what's going on with permitting and how that affects people and businesses. So with that said, I'm open to.
Well, tonight, we'll, we're gonna have a discussion about that more, more detail, and hopefully you'll get a better understanding of it. But we're trying to get, I'm trying to get an understanding of, of how you conduct your business, what you need to conduct your business, you know, so that you can, you can be as successful as possible. And, and I think it's always the intention of this planning commission not to put restrictions on business owners, which are gonna cause them not to be able to operate in a way that they can be profitable. So that, I know that's our overall intention. Anyway, thank you for your comments.
I appreciate.
If you have anything else to clo- make a closing, go ahead. Otherwise, we'll, we'll move on to the other public comments.
Well, first of all, thank you for listening. Thank everybody for being here and listening. And again, I am part of this community now, and I love it, and I want to stay here, and I want to be happy and successful in the long run, so, and my staff.
Well, we're happy to have you here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any comments from anybody in the public regarding this application at this time? Why don't you wait till the follow-up? Because you, I'll give you, because you're, you're, you're the applicant, and then I'll, this way we get all of it out there, and then you might, it might bring up some things that need to be answered, which you can answer for us. So is there anybody else here in the chamber that wanted to address the planning commission regarding this application? Anybody online? Okay, all right, I'll invite you back up then.
Thank you again. Just wanted to note a few things. There is value in that use to the family, has been for years.
So how, go ahead and explain that to me, because I'm just trying to get.
The value of the drinking establishment.
How you see it, I mean, the way I see this is she has, she's operating the restaurant.
Understood.
But the permit stays with the property.
Correct.
So, so I guess the way I see a potential value to her is that when, if she sold the business, there's some more flexibility there. But, but you, as a property owner, you, you probably see it in, it's, it's a different value to you.
Correct, because we've been approached by the city a number of times to ask if we relinquish that drinking establishment for another establishment in town.
So you have been asked that?
Oh, yes, a number of times. Yeast of Eden was one where, you look at that, they wanted a drinking establishment. We were approached, now it's Alvarado. We were approached, now it's Alvarado, uh, company, uh.
Brewery company, yeah.
They wanted just a straight drinking establishment, think about it, is that what you wanted in the plaza? I don't know, uh, but if we allowed that to happen, that was gonna go in. Sadie's, the owner of Sadie's approached me, they wanted to purchase Carmel Bell, I mean, Carmel, I'm sorry, A W Shucks, and then move it someplace else. They also asked me, what's, what's it worth to you? I said, well, it's not for sale, it's staying with the property. That's why I'm concerned while we're here, it's almost as if something's happening. This was all settled back in two thousand fifteen, I thought, it's a drinking establishment, we had that use. If it ever came to us where we said, no, you weren't gonna, we wouldn't have gone down that path. I wouldn't have gone down that path. Now we're in a situation where it's brought before the commissioners, and you have a tough choice to make, okay? Cuz there is value to the landlord, and where does that use go? And do we lose that value? I don't know how that procedure is, does it get thrown out there, and now there's a war? That's a very valuable use in town, how do you determine who gets it? And who gets to determine that? Does the landlord who owned it, are you gonna strip me of that and say, sorry, we're just gonna take it away? I don't think that's fair, okay? And I don't know where we are in this situation, but if we're leaning towards that, we need to have that discussion, how this transition would happen. If there's any compensation, I don't know, but there's definitely value there when you have three restricted uses, and you put that out there, I don't know who determines that, is there a lottery? How does that happen? That's my point, so there is definitely value to the land, and it's been there for a while, and we'll work with you, but that's a major concern of mine, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. All right, I'm assuming there's nobody else that was gonna make any comments on this, so I'm gonna close the public comments, open up the commissioners for discussion. I think the commission understands what's, what the, what the parameters are here, which, which the staff has put out. Do you have some questions about that? Can you get up, bring up those two? You had, uh, what the property owners request, and then you had the amended use. Okay, all right, um, Commissioner Locke, would you like to begin?
Thank you. Sorry, I have to say, A W Shucks is one of my favorite restaurants, so.
It's a great place to eat.
Yeah.
Through the chair, before you start, if you need me to pull any other sections of the code.
Yeah, no, I'm good for right now, I'm just gonna start, and I'm sure that we're gonna have a lot of discussion. First of all, I'm kinda surprised, this was not what I thought we were coming to talk about today. And I think that as we move into this, this might be something we wanna continue and talk about at another time, because, um, I'd like to have more information on the history of the city's three drinking establishments, going way back, and how they came up with these things. And again, I think the applicant's questions regarding, how does the planning commission make a determination? You know, how do you, how do you fairly do this? I can see how this has gotten attention recently, and again, this was not really what I read into the staff report on this on, because my understanding of what we have in front of us right now on the screen, you know, maintaining a drinking place and full-line restaurant uses conflict with each other. You can't be both, you're one or the other. And I believe right now, it is a full-line restaurant, and I can understand that the, that the applicant is concerned that if it is called full-line restaurant, then you may not have this ability to continue maintaining a drinking place, but it's not a drinking place right now. I also worked in the Dow Arcade in the eighties, when it was Maxwell's, and it was definitely a drinking place. So, um, the, you know, there, there really is a big difference on those two things. So I guess, as far as, um, further comments on it, I, I just, I actually would like to continue it for further discussion, but I do wanna hear what my colleagues have to say.
Well, just the point, we're not making a resolution tonight. We're not, we're not making a decision, we're just really giving direction and having a discussion, so continue discussing.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, so I would like to accommodate them. Like, I would like to find a way to maintain, um, the drinking establishment and full-line restaurant. So I don't know if, is that even possible? Okay, so that's, that's how I, that's where I'm going.
Great, Commissioner Alba.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I, I go back to my first comment, that I don't know why we have use permits and findings if they don't match the use. I don't know how our compliance officers then do their, in, their, uh, their inspections and their reports. I agree with Commissioner Locke that there's a conflict here. And I can only, I can only comment on what's before me, I did not participate in what led us here. Hopefully, I can be a part of a solution to clarifying, and also bringing good justice both to the city's system of permitting, as well as our small businesses, which are so very, very valuable to us. I think it's important to remember that all sorts of events can trigger, um, a review of a property or a business. Think for instance of, in the residential area, a certain number of walls are touched, and all of a sudden then, an entirely different set of circumstances are placed upon the architect and the property owner. So all sorts of events can trigger, um, I, I hear, I understand an inquiry triggered this, this event to review the way that the existing use permit, um, what it reads, how, and how the business is operating. I would like to understand more about how full-line restaurants with bars operate, and what those use permits read. I'm unclear how a change in a u-, to a use permit with a full-line restaurant, I'm unclear how that is taking something away from the owner, especially given they are, do appear to be operating as a full-line restaurant. We did not see the menu in the presentation, but I did pull it up here as we were talking. Uh, I, I'm a big fan of this particular establishment, I love their food, and it's a rather extensive menu, and I would think to ask this business to return to the findings of a drinking establishment is not in line with the way that they're operating, the way that they purchased the business, and the way that they're currently profitable. I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't say what is gonna be good in five years, whether they need to be a drinking establishment or a full-line restaurant to maintain their economy, but I can see, you know, what they're doing now. It does sound, from Ms. Bassi, it sounds like, uh, at the moment, alcohol is subordinate to food, which is in keeping with the description of a full-line restaurant. And I have a question, really, I think that could be for staff. Because I, I don't, I'm, I am the freshman commissioner here. I am conflicted when I, when I hear cases like this, where there have been a series of events that lead us to conflicts, especially when the, the, the person bearing the brunt of the conflict is one of our small businesses. That is something that I hope to make a positive change for. So a question to staff perhaps? If Ms. Bassi sold the business today with the current use permit that is for a drinking establishment, would the city require the removal of the kitchen? Would the city require noticing to the new owner of the, um, the, the findings of the use permit that travels with the location? Or would that sale perpetuate this non-conformity with what we've got in front of us? Thank you.
The correct answer would be, the city should notify the new business operator of the confines of the use permit. And the business license should be consistent with, with the use permit, unless it, again, is amended.
And, and that would, if I understand what was being said earlier, that would require removal of certain kitchen equipment and the submittal of a new menu?
Either that or an amendment to the use permit, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kara Pytkoff, your comments.
Yeah, it's a difficult, difficult one, because for me, A W Shuck is, is a very special place. It's not, it's, it, when you go in, it doesn't feel like a full-line restaurant, it doesn't feel like a bar, definitely. It's somewhere in between, but it's very unique, it's, it's very special. It's something that happens with places that had been around for a long, long time, and kind of incrementally, gradually came to that. Nobody planned it to be that way, nobody, there's no architect or kind of a restaurant designer, I guess, who came up with that setup, it was just incrementally changed over a long period of time. And I really like that about it, I mean, if you think about it, we have more than fifty restaurants in town. No other restaurant is like A W Shuck, I mean, that, you, you, even the fact that, you know, most tables are like tall tables, I think all of the tables are tall tables, right? And you have some, so much space around the bar, that's kind of unique. And then, the other thing is, we call it a kitchen, doesn't feel like a kitchen. It, it feels like somebody attached the, like a range next to the bar, right? If you, and you can watch these people working just like a, literally like two feet from your nose, cooking something, so it's, it's really a very different experience from a, a traditional full-line restaurant. So, and I know the code is always limited, we're like always trying to put everything in boxes neatly, kind of stack it and make sure that everything has a label. But A W Shuck, I, I don't know if it needs a label, it's kind of one of these things that makes Carmel different, and quirky, and kind of unique. And if we make, so first of all, I don't wanna make any immediate changes, like anything that can impact the look and feel of the restaurant. I want to be very careful with that, because this is not something that you can just change. It, it has been evolving for decades and decades. So, from, from my perspective, we shouldn't make any rapid changes, we should postpone that, have time to think about it, uh, and, and explore options. I do understand why the owner wants to retain the license as a drinking establishment, because this is part of their history, it's the DNA. It's like, if you go to France, for example, and you sit in a full-line restaurant, but it was the stable of Napoleon the Third, right? So you went to a full, full-line restaurant, but it was actually a stable, still like horses, pictures of horses, you see where the stable was, you know, you can feel the environment, and then you come back with the feeling, I wasn't in a full-line restaurant, I was in the stable of Napoleon the Third, whatever. So I think that when people go to A W Shuck and live it, they don't have the feeling that they've been to a full-line restaurant. I, I, I never have this experience. I feel it was much more informal, the menu stuff, you know, some people get menus, some people don't, nobody gives you a menu. If you ask for one, they will give you, but most people just know what they, what they want. So, uh, and then the other component that was also raised, do we need another drinking space, you know, drinking place in, in Carmel? And I would say, not necessarily, I mean, we already have two, plus this one. If it's nine-thirty in the evening, and I wanna have a visitor or a local go to a place to have a beer, or glass of wine, or cocktail, I would prefer them to go to A W Shuck and have something to eat with a drink, rather than go to other places. So I would say, uh, we need to look at that as well, you know, the common good, the history of the place, the quirkiness, the Carmel style of this place, there are a lot of considerations that we have to, um, to include in this. And I, I, I just don't wanna ma-, don't wanna make it like a simple, is it a full-line restaurant versus is it a bar discussion? It's not that simple, so I, I need more time to think about it, thank you.
Okay, um, I guess because I've been on this planning commission so darn long, I, I, I have a certain history about this, and just to sum it up, the residents of Carmel have said so many times, they don't want any more bars in town. That's why we have three. And, um, this came out during, we were having lots of applications for wine tasting rooms. When Bar Mel came up, I was involved in all of those, Bar Mel had complaints, they were back, involved in that, they finally decided to serve some food. Anyway, long story short, the community does not want another bar in town other than the three. Here's what I'm gonna suggest as direction. Okay, the owner of the property owns the permit for the drinking place, it should stay with that property. It stays with that property. The operator of the property right now is operating as a full-line restaurant with, with, with a bar. Great, okay? If, if you, I suggest you make findings to allow the drinking place permit to stay with the property, but allow the operator to have the use permit to operate as a full-line restaurant. I don't, I mean, you can get into the weeds on this and figure out if there's a problem on that, but that solves the issue, that cleans it up, right there.
Just to clarify.
They're shaking their heads, they get it, I think I got enough, I got an understanding from my questions of how you see the value, how you see the fairness, how you wanna operate your business, and, and, and I think that does it, and that clears up the problems for the city, you know?
I would second.
So just to clarify, the, should the property owner and operator agree? Your suggestion is to maintain the use permit?
Well, I don't know how you're gonna deal with it, but they need, if, if you wanna get this consistent with, so what I'm saying is, you give the operator a use permit for a full-line restaurant with alcohol sales.
Okay.
And the drinking, uh, place permit, uh, permit stays with the property, which this owner owns. Now, when he sells, when he sells the property, you know, maybe we'll have another discussion, but, but my, my understanding about use permits, the premise is they stay with the property, they don't, you know, in other words, you can't take, you can't go someplace else with that, that bar. And I know damn well why this came up. And I'm not gonna say any names here, but there is a business that recently closed in town, and that's why this came up.
Yes.
That's exactly why it came up, and I'm not gonna say any names, but I know, I know why, how the complaint was made and why it was made. So, uh, I'm, you know, but having said that, that doesn't mean anything, that doesn't bias my opinion. My opinion is based upon the value to the owner here, and that, and also that the community has expressed over and over again, that they do not want another drinking place in this town. And, you know, and they are, and, and the complaints were just what the owner said, that if you just serve alcohol, you got a lot of problems, and there's a lot of stuff that goes along with it. Excess smoking, uh, fighting, you, just all, you know, any crime that's ever recorded in this country is associated with alcohol. I mean, you know, any violent crime, there's always drugs involved. So that's why we don't wanna have, you know, excess drinking. And fortunately, the trend is down for drinking, as you said, it really is. People are getting the message, just like they got it on smoking finally, you know? There's a lot of bad stuff that happens to you if you drink a lot. So anyway, that's, that's my direction, I don't know how the, how the commissioners feel about it, you can discuss it. I think the only problem maybe with my, my direction is that, can a property have two use permits on it? I don't know, I don't know how you resolve that, but that's where you get the big bucks. I'm a volunteer.
Staff, staff gets that one.
Chair, Chair, I have a question on all of that, and, and again, it, it leads, it's because of my freshman-ness. I don't have the six hundred years of planning commission experience you do, sir. But again, well, and it kind of leans to what you just said, like, can, um, can a business have two different use permits? And it, I mean, uh, uh, all that we heard today is, points to the business at the moment operating as a full-line restaurant. And I don't understand why a full-line restaurant needs a drinking establishment permit. And if it's not using that because it, because it is operating.
It just has to be subordinate to the food, that's all.
But so, I, I, I don't know why it needs.
The way that's controlled is by the number of seats that are allowed at the bar, is that correct? Am I right, right, right?
Ye-, yes, um, for a restaurant, for a full-line restaurant to, to be considered a full- For a restaurant, for a full line restaurant to to be considered a full line restaurant, cannot have more than twenty percent of the seats at the bar.
Twenty percent, not not twenty.
But if it does, then you are required to meet the, you are required to be consistent with the requirements of a drinking establishment.
Well, plus, there's an, there's a, um, a, a set, um, uh, what restriction on the hours that they can operate, right?
It, there is, that comes into play when you're closer to residential area. I believe there there may be like two restaurants where the planning commission has extended the hours beyond, like the typical eight o'clock, nine o'clock.
Yeah, just the hours basically have to give the impact.
Yeah, but the the other restaurants in town that serve alcohol, most of them, right? Do they also have a drinking establishment permit?
No, they do not.
And they can't stay?
They don't. And and, you know, I.
So, it, it, folks, we have to, we have to try to bring some fairness into all of this.
Well, this is, this is, this, this is, uh, issue is unique because the community has decided they only want three drinking places in town. That's, that's it. So it's not, you know, so the issue really here is, do we want, if if, you know, if we, one way you can look at this, and this is kind of where I started my question, where I said, if they are a full line restaurant, does that, all of a sudden, this permit is out there for whatever, you know, use? You know, and and as the applicant said, or the owner says, is it going to be a lottery? How are you going to do it? How's it going to be fair? But, but, but the the reason why there is an unfairness, the reason why there is not an open market on drinking places is because the inherent negative impacts to the community. And the community has expressed over and over again that they want this limitation. So, we, that is a, that's a finding, that's a direction. So we don't want this drinking place permit just put out there on the market. So my suggestion is, it stays with the property where it is now, where it's been, I guess as far as this property has been in operation. And if they, if if the planning, if the staff wants to get the, um, uh, you know, the, the, the permit in line with the current use, so you don't have this contradiction of use, just issue a full line restaurant permit, leave, and leave this drinking thing right there, just sitting dormant, where it's not doing any harm and nothing's changing. Who cares? I mean, that was, that was why this thing developed the way it did.
There.
You know, I mean, it developed the way it did. They allowed them to serve more and more food and make the alcohol become less, uh, you know, part of the the overall, part of the business. In other words, the alcohol became subservient to the food, you know, because they don't, we don't want the negative impacts. And the staff didn't want that, and they saw the benefit. And I'm sure they heard public testimony to that effect. I mean, I heard it, you know, when I was listening to, uh, all these discussions about the wine tasting rooms, about Barmel, it was a lot of discussion about when Barmel was permitted. And I was here on the planning commission when that all happened. So I'm suggesting, and that the way to handle this is to leave that drinking place permit attached to that building, that site, and then just issue this operator a full line restaurant use permit. If you want to, if you want to look at their hours of operation, whatever. I mean, I don't know. I mean, the thing about them, this, this, this operation has a history. It's, as far as I, it has it had any complaints? Are there any history of any complaints for this property? I mean, I don't know.
The recent, just the, the recent.
But I mean, typically, when we, when we deal with their operation, we we deal with in the context of the impacts they potentially could have. That's why usually restaurants are conditional use permit. And and then if they have a history of abusing that, then they may come back to the planning commission. And we've had that, there's been some restaurants, mostly had to do with noise from music, you know, live music was, has been a problem. So anyway, that, that's, that's a, that is a direction I would give if, you know, we're just, we're just giving direction, this is just discussion. If any other planning commissioners want to, uh, provide any, um, you know, changes to that or, you know, whatever.
I have a question though.
Otherwise, let's move on.
Um, yeah, and like I said, I just think this is going on a long time. I had not planned on this kind of a discussion, but, um, can you have a use permit? Does, the drinking establishment permit, if it's not used, it becomes available? It doesn't attach to the land, correct?
Becomes abandoned. How, however, um, the staff would have to work with the applicant. As previously mentioned, you can have ancillary uses that exceed the typical ten percent.
Right, yeah, but it's not fifty percent or, I mean, once you get to fifty percent, you're tipping the other direction now, so. I don't know, I I'm really conflicted about this. I think that that having a dormant use permit, that's one of three.
Yeah.
Then you're also taking away, you know, you know, somebody's, something that the city said will have three, but we don't have three, we've got two. So.
Well, this is, this is just, this is going to come back for.
It's a conflict.
From, from staff, and I think that we have raised the issues that surround these these two permits and how they're attached to the land use. So I think we've given enough direction to, uh, to staff to work on this, and it'll come back, and there's going to be more discussion about this, so. And I I appreciate the the property owner's input and patience with the city because I do, I do, uh, there is a certain, you know, well, the thing that this, that I see here is that these, this property owner and the operators through the whole history of this business have always operated in good faith, you know? I mean, just by the fact they've got all these permits that were approved. So there's never been, you know, any bad faith here. And I, I, because of that, I believe that they need to be treated as fairly as as possible in the context of of what can be done, you know? And I think there are extenuating circumstances here because this is a very limited use drinking places, because it's acknowledged that they have, has very negative impacts on the community. So it has to be dealt with in in a special way. So, have at it. Anyway, I think we're, that will conclude, uh, this item, and we will move on. Thank you all for your, uh, your input and your discussion on this. Okay. Thank you. Are you guys, guys playing musical chairs over there? What's going on? Okay, everyone. Let's, uh.
A reminder of open meaning laws and discussion.
Can we, uh?
You can't talk about it.
Yeah, we can't talk about this, you guys. We need to, we need to stop the discussion. Okay, that brings us to the next item of public hearings, item number six. This is a design study. This is D S two five one six two. Uh, it's fifty-eight fifty-five for Unibro LLC's consideration of a concept design study for the remodel of a one-story single-family residence and construction of one hundred forty-eight square foot addition, fifty-seven square foot covered entry, two hundred sixty-four square foot detached garage, and, um, yeah, staff report, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. As discussed, we'll be reviewing D S twenty-five one six two, five eight five five, Unibro LLC. A little background on the project, you can see the site plan here, uh, well, the address we just went over. Uh, the existing structure is a kind of L-shaped, single-family home, single-story, existing F A of R of twelve sixty-four, existing site coverage eleven ninety. And the site has an existing fence and pathway that encroach into the right-of-way. The applicant is proposing quite a bit of work. They are going to, uh, do a hundred forty-eight square foot addition to the home, two hundred sixty-four square foot detached garage that would encroach into the front setback, uh, and a covered entry. Addition, additionally, they would be, uh, bringing the site coverage into compliance. There is a proposal to, um, have a driveway that is paved as impermeable, uh, update the pathway to be DG in the right-of-way to remove the, uh, paver encroachment and create a permeable paver pathway and patio that would connect the garage, entry, and addition. Forest character, there were nine trees identified on site at the preliminary site assessment, seven of which were determined to be significant trees, two of which were determined to not be significant. One of the non-significant trees was, uh, is slated for removal, that's number seven. I did some wonderful kind of ad hoc Photoshop to throw the tree on there on the patio, you could see. Um, and in addition to that, the applicants are proposing to add in five additional new trees, four fern pines, and one Japanese maple, so they will meet all tree density requirements. Topographically, the site is fairly flat, uh, with a high point of a hundred thirty-eight feet above sea level and a low of one thirty-four. It's a gentle slope that goes kind of, uh, south-west and northeast, goes diagonal that way across the property, uh, with just the smallest dip at the corner there. I've generally shaded the regions of the, uh, site plan so you could see how the slope, uh, goes across the property, um, but no concerns topographically. There is no preliminary grading and drainage plan currently, but it is going to be required before final details, so just so we can make sure that all drainage on site is appropriate. We have not had anyone express view or privacy concerns. The property is maintaining that single-story, a single-family home with the addition and changes to the roof. They are going from a flat roof to a pitched roof, which we'll discuss soon. Parking and access, they're proposing a detached garage that would encroach five feet into the fifteen-foot front setback, so it'd be ten feet from the property line. There would be a nine-foot wide paver driveway that would have a slight bend in it to avoid the existing significant trees that are in the right-of-way adjacent to the property. And then there would be landscaping and wood chips. Staff's op- opinion is that they currently meet all the requirements for having a garage that encroaches into the front setback with the appropriate amount of landscaping and pedestrian safety considered. Uh, as we can see, mass and bulk, they're maintaining the single-story with the addition and the change in roof pitch. They will be required to do the volume study before final details meeting. They're increasing the pitch of the roof from a flat roof to a pitched roof. But they seem to meet, they currently meet all the plate and ridge height requirements for a single-story structure, and we'll see if they pass volume. It seems like they should. Uh, and in the neighborhood, for context, for mass and bulk, there's a variety of homes that are both single and two stories, so it fits in with the context of the neighborhood. For building in roof form, as I've said previously, they're going from a flat roof to a pitched roof. The pitches will be five and twelve and three and twelve. It maintains overall the same shape, but it's getting a little bit more rectangular instead of L-shaped. But there are some breaks in the mass, so it's not just one massive structure. With that, I recommend that the planning commission adopt the resolution as presented to the commission. I'm here for any questions.
Okay, questions from staff, from the commissioners? Nope, okay.
Oh, I do have one more thing that I forgot.
Okay, go ahead.
We had the late break in comments, so I actually haven't had a chance to talk to the applicant about this. Uh, Ms. Felido reached out to us with concerns about, um, construction management slash parking management for the contractors to not park in the center median. That'll be handled at the building permit stage under their build, uh, construction management plan, so just wanted to make sure that I wasn't, uh, that I was airing all comments that we received. Uh, she did express some concerns about the dispensable space, um, that is potentially going to be adopted as part of the California Building Code with, uh, fire regulations regarding space around the property and the fact that they're currently proposing wood chips. But, uh, as currently written, nothing in the building code prohibits what the applicant is proposing. And the last and most significant thing that I was informed from Ms. Felido, um, was that the property to the rear of this property has their gas meter on this property. So it's something that I wanted to make sure to speak to in public hearing, and I can work with the applicant on a solution for that going forward. It shouldn't affect anything that is proposed, but, um, just wanted to make sure that we had that for transparency.
Thank you. Okay, any questions about those comments? All right, okay, this time I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and, you're not the applicant? Is there anybody here representing the applicant? Nobody here representing the applicant?
Yes.
Oh, there is. They're, they're online.
Okay, are we, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Okay. Chairman and commissioners, this is John Moore, the building designer on the project. Uh, thank you for your time this evening. I think Jacob did a good job explaining the, uh, project. We worked together with him before on, uh, many other projects as well as this one. And, uh, it's, it's the, uh, the homeowner wants to, um, uh, take a house that's non-conforming now as far as, uh, the site coverage and and whatnot, make a house that's a little bit more livable in today's standards, um, and then get, get things back in compliance. And, uh, I think we got something that's got a little bit more charm than the, uh, flat roof L that's here now, and, um, that's what we're proposing. So if you have any questions, I, I agree with the staff comments and some of the conditions that I've seen. I was not privy to any of the, uh, comments that Jacob just brought up, but I don't see any issues with any of, any of those three I think he was at the bottom.
Is that, is all your comments, John?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, uh, I don't see any other hands going up. See any there, shall we?
No, sir.
Nope, yeah, I don't see any there. Okay, I'm going to close the public comments, bring it back to the commission for their comments. Commissioner Kara Potkoff, your comments?
So, that, that project has been straightforward and, and while they're staying on one, one level, um, I, the whole project makes sense. I mean, clearly, they, they want to add a little bit of, there is a powder room that they're adding, uh, washer and dryer, right? That is, that's the project where they add a washer and dryer at the end. Yeah, so there's all practical changes, covering the porch, uh, not major increase of of square footage. Uh, obviously, some side coverage needs to be removed because there's a lot of side coverage around the house. I'm not sure about the siding, um, is it two types of siding? You know, I see some of the elevation show, two of the elevation show something that looks like stucco and the other two show boards, like vertical, horizontal boards? Can you explain what's going on there?
That's correct. Uh, there seems to be, uh, portions of the house that are retaining the stucco exterior and then some portions that are going with shiplap and some with vertical siding. I think that maybe, I I can't speak to the, the thought and the design, see maybe something like in, I don't know if you have exterior accent walls, but something like that. But, uh, I didn't delve too deep into that because I figured we could cover that more at final details, but if you have direction that you think that they should maintain consistency or at least stick to two types of siding instead of three, I think that would be appropriate. We could make a condition for them to update their plans before final details.
Yeah, I think that's, that's generally the, I had a discussion with Evan Court about that a couple of weeks ago. I think the general kind of, uh, direction is to keep it consistent as much as possible. And if you have different kind of siding material, we want it to finish at the interior corner, right? So that it looks natural, not, not finish on the exterior one. So that, I think this is, this is the guideline that we are following, right?
Typically, that direction we give for stonework, for the stonework siding we want to terminate, but I think it very much applies to, to any kind of wood siding as well. You wouldn't want to see, um, seemingly arbitrary terminations of any kind of siding.
Okay, um, yeah, I think I'm, I'm good, yeah, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Locke?
Sure, yeah, I don't have a lot to add to that. I think that the elevation from the street, you don't really see that necessarily all the different, um, proposed siding, but that was, that was my only comment as well. Um, I think it's a little busy, and, um, other than that, I have no problems with it.
Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, I feel the exact same way. Uh, seems very thoughtful and looks like a good design, so, um, yeah, I like it.
And Commissioner Auburn?
Um, I think Designer John Moore has done a tremendous job of following the design guidelines for the city, um, with the added bonus that the site coverage is coming much more into conformity. That's absolutely awesome. Setback, we've got a little bit of encroachment, right, in the front, uh, for the, for the garage?
Yes.
Okay. Fire sprinklers are required. I did see the table in the, in the plans. I did have a question, uh, and for me, the materials are fine. I looked at the door and window schedule, more I glanced at it. Mr. Um Mr. Olander, are they re- are they replacing all of the windows? Will all of the windows be consistent? Cause this is an addition, so it's not a full rebuild. Do you happen to know if the if and if it there, if not all of the windows will be replaced, will will there be consistency throughout?
I can't recall off the top of my head, but uh we certainly want them to keep consistent windows. It is something that I would delve into deeper at the finished details meeting bef- beforehand as part of my review. So we'll make sure that if they are replacing all windows, it'll be consistent. If they're not, they'll be consistent throughout.
Wonderful, so you can add that comment?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Um yeah, I I think staff, I'm I'm agree with staff's findings to support this project. I would agree with Commissioner Kara Patkov though that I think I think uh make a decision about, you know, which way you wanna run the siding, just do it all the same. You know, either horizontal or vertically, I don't care, but just for consistency and simplification, you know, do that. I I probably would prefer horizontal, but I'm not designing. I just think that it needs to be simplified a little bit and consistent. I think when you see cottages in our community and this, he's making, this is turning into a nice cottage uh representation. Um I think that, you know, if they they would tie into that that hori- horizontal siding look, that's a very uh typical, you know, historical way that they would apply siding. So in that, um I would make a motion to accept the resolution as per staff with any direction that's been given by the planning commission.
Yes, one more, more.
Absolutely.
So I see a gas meter on the north elevation. Is that a gas meter belonging to this house or the one belonging to the other house?
I believe the one that uh Karen Felido was referring to was on the other house and back, is that correct? The existing gas meter or the gas meter that's?
The gas meter for their neighbor's property is on this property somewhere. I was just informed of this today. It is, it is on the building is what I was informed.
It's on the building?
That's what I was told, but I have not had a chance to dig into this yet. So I believe I'm I'm gonna be doing some follow-up research on this.
Yeah, that's something that needs to be rectified, but.
Yes.
Anyway, you, I'm sure you'll do your homework on that.
That's my plan. I I talked to Ms. Felido uh about one minute before our uh two hours of inspection. So it's um it's all brand new to me, so I'll be I'll be digging into that.
Yeah, that's something that needs, but that that's that's kind of a building issue.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any more discussion?
No.
All right, roll call please.
Commissioner Auburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Patkov?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes, okay, the motion is carried, thank you. Okay, that brings us to item number seven on the public hearing agenda. That is uh another design study, this is DS two-three dash one-three-seven. The Lehman Project's consideration of design study uh to increase the height to the front portion of the roof and add gables to the front portion of the roof and make minor adjustments to the roof and rear of the property throughout. Can you have staff report, please?
Uh just to clarify, this is for an amendment to twenty-three-one-three-seven. Uh the design study is twenty-five-two-three-three, but it is amending two-three-one-seven, just to clarify for the record. The background for the project, it is at San Carlo Street, five southwest of thirteenth. Uh it's being referred to the planning commission due to the increase in uh pitch of the front portion of the roof. Uh this project was previously approved as part of DS twenty-three-one-three-seven um by the planning commission for their addition of an attached garage to the front portion of the property. As we'll go through the slides, you'll see what was originally approved and then what is being proposed currently. The design guidelines encourage having pitches of roofs between four and twelve and six and twelve. So this was referred to the planning commission due to deviations from the design guidelines. Um the applicant initially proposed an eight and twelve, but has reduced it down to six-point-five and twelve. So it's just just shy of that that bounds that we typically see in the design guidelines. Um but staff believes it meets the intent. Um so we're gonna be looking at some elevations. Um here is the, the top one is what was i- what is existing. The middle one is what was previously approved by the planning commission and the bottom one is what is being proposed currently. So there are some changes, they're gonna be uh switching from hipped to gabled, uh slightly moving the dormers over uh to the south. Um and then changing of the siding from the addition of wood shingle siding to maintaining the stucco with the uh adding a wainscot and uh changing the chimney to match that. Here is the final elevations, there's no increase uh to the height, no net increase overall. The front is going slightly higher, but it'll maintain the same height of the property overall. Um the roofs will be uh hipped portions, four and twelve, gabled portions, six-point-five and twelve, and the dormer one and twelve. The applicant informed me that the desire for the increase in pitch would be for higher pitch ceilings cause um based off the design, the lower pitch and lower roof um was a little bit awkward in the interior for their living space. And uh it's of my opinion that the the adding the gable and reducing the number of hips has simplified the roof form cause there was this, the building was curving around to the south and it caused several different roof planes to be needed um at that portion of the property. Uh in addition, the property's gonna be bringing, being brought into conformance with site coverage. Uh as we saw on the site currently, there's a solid um full driveway going back to the existing garage and there's reducing that down to just these two paver uh strips. Uh a front entry patio and then a gravel patio at the south portion of the property. Uh currently, there's also a concrete path that goes around to the rear of the property that is slated to be removed as part of this to make it um compliant. Uh here is for the finished details for the property, they're sticking to muted earth tones. Uh there'll be aluminum gutters and aluminum clad windows and doors, they'll be consistent throughout. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution as presented by staff.
Okay, questions for staff?
Um I I saw two different types of roof. Can you show me the elevation where we have metal and com- composite shingle?
Yes, the um. Sorry. Yes, the uh the metal is just purely for uh the shed roof portion over the dormer and it was previously approved as a a metal on that dormer. Um and so they're just maintaining that, just shifting the dormer over a little bit and shifting the color palette from that gray comp shingle to slightly more brown earth tones. I think it's the autumn blend, which is something that we've deemed appropriate in the past.
Okay.
And the metal roof will be the um uh Western States metal, it'll be a matte finish, I think it's the medium bronze.
Uh huh, thank you. Okay, any more questions? All right, uh let's say I'd like like to invite the applicant to speak to us. Okay, we have, we have. And you are representation for Adam Jesselink?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Chair LaPage, members of the planning commission and staff. My name is Arnaud Winard, I'm here on behalf of Adam Jesselink, the architect representing Ms. Lehman and the house under consideration tonight. I'd like to thank the staff for this presentation and the recommendation for approval. We are here tonight to revisit this project, which was originally approved in twenty-twenty-three, put on hold, and now two years later, in twenty-twenty-five, uh we are moving forward again with a few just, just a few minor adjustments. This proposal is essentially a revision to the proposed uh previous design. The building footprint remains the same and the main differences are to the roof and to the exterior materials. We are no longer replacing the stucco with shingles, instead we are keeping the stucco. We believe it's more appropriate and it provides a better match to the existing house. Um regarding the roof, um we are proposing to keep the original roof at the back and proposing a new gable to the front. This is meant to simplify the roof system and roof form since the new gable at the front is intended to be aligned with the existing ridge at the back. So it is true that uh oh uh the proposed design increases the height of the front roof by a few inches, but overall is consistent with existing conditions. And we have also updated the front uh fence design. Uh we have removed the stone post, that's in line with one of the conditions of the previous approval. And that's it, the project is still in compliance with all the zoning requirements, height setbacks, uh volume. We will accept all the standard and uh special conditions and that's it. Thank you for your time and consideration and happy to answer any questions that we have, thanks.
Questions? I have one question. Why six and a half and twelve, why not six? I mean, that's a really odd pitch.
Yes, it is. Uh that was intended to basically uh, you know, align the existing ridge of the house, we have it from survey. So we had the proposed plate that we were suggesting, which is ten inches taller than the existing house, only for the living room. And uh yeah, that was the number that came up, that we came up with. I mean, it was previously previously uh proposed as to eight to twelve, but we changed it to six and a half to twelve, yeah.
So the, so you, if I'm understanding what you're saying, there is something to do with the ridge height that was proposed before?
Uh no, it is uh consistent with the existing uh ridge of the existing house. So we are keeping part of.
So you wanna keep the ridge the same?
Correct.
As the original house?
That's correct.
So are you um, is that because you're gonna be saving some of that framing?
Correct.
And and so the, the pitch change is because you're lowering the uh plate height?
Uh we are uh raising the plate height only in the living room, so the front gable. Yes, by ten inches. So the existing uh plate is at eight feet and then we're proposing a new plate height at the front of eight and twelve, eight to eight twelve, yeah, eight-ten, sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you. You have questions? All right, thanks.
Thanks.
If we have questions, we'll call you back.
Okay.
But thank you. All right, uh any members of the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? Anybody online? Nope, okay, close the public comments, open up the commissioners. Commissioner Auburn, you wanna start?
Um I have very little to say. Um I again, once again, we're seeing a site coverage um reduced. I think that's just absolutely awesome. Looks like a beautiful design that has a very nice caramel feel to it. I do prefer the the second design to the first one that was originally approved. Um and the color palette, I think, will be absolutely perfect on site. So I did actually have that same six and a half question, so I'm glad you asked it. It does seem like an odd, odd number. Um but simplifying the roof form, I think also is very um very caramel. So um I like the plan, I'm glad it's before us.
Mr. Allen?
Uh yeah, totally agree with your comments. Um I think it is a very appropriate uh proposal and um I agree with staff's recommendation.
And Commissioner Locke?
I agree with the previous comments and I like the stucco.
Uh Commissioner Kara Patkov?
No, no comments, I'm I'm good.
Well, my only comment is the guidelines support six and twelve, so you should, it should be six and twelve. I don't see any reason to, I mean, I don't, I don't understand, you gave me an explanation, but I'm sorry, I don't understand it. Uh if there is some compelling reason because of the existing roof or something, but I I didn't hear that. So um, you know, I think we should stick with what's supported by the guidelines.
I'd agree with that, yeah, we're good.
All right, so um we have a motion from staff with, I didn't look at the motion, but are there, were there any draft conditions that we need to be aware of?
To clarify, would you be adopting the resolution as presented by staff with the added special condition that they reduce the pitch of the front portion of the roof to six and twelve, from six and a half and twelve?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and I I would make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Auburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Patkov?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes, motion is carried, thank you. Okay, that brings us to item number eight on the public hearings tonight. This is a, I guess SI stands for sign, am I correct? This is SI two-five-one-four-eight, the Brunello Cusinelli uh application. This is a consideration of a sign permit for a second sign for retail space in the Carmel Plaza. Can we have just a staff report, please?
Good afternoon, commissioners. We're reviewing sign permit SI twenty-five-one-four-eight Brunello Cusinelli. So this project, um the retailer recently did a design study at the plaza to combine two uh retail stores into one and did some work on the facade. It went to the Historic Resource Board to determine if the proposed design was consistent with the design character of the Conservation District and was determined that it was. Everything was approved. Uh the only hiccup was that the two retail spaces that were combined into one now had one store with two entrances, one that was facing Ocean Avenue and one that was facing the interior walkway of the plaza. Our code is unfortunately lacking in a path forward for businesses with multiple signs. So we brought it here to the commission to approve potentially the second sign at the interior walkway entrance. Uh here's the sign that is proposed. It was what is approved on the Ocean Avenue side. Because it's a wall-mounted sign, it is allowed to have a little extra square footage, six square feet as opposed to three for a hanging sign. The sign meets all of our standards for wall-mounted signs um and has been determined to fit with the character of the Conservation District. So really, it is for the planning commission to determine if it's appropriate to have multiple signs, which kind of brings us to the main thrust of this presentation and this decision. Uh not only will you be um deciding whether to approve a second sign, but staff is requesting direction from the planning commission on how we'd handle this kind of situation in the future. Um so the previous sign code uh had a section called planning commission approval. And as you can see, under B one, number, additional business signs may be per- permitted in unusual circumstances such as, but not limited to, a business that has entrances on two different public right-of-ways. So that was removed when the sign ordinance was updated in, I believe, twenty-eighteen. I believe there is two main factors uh that I was able to determine via my research on why the sign code is updated. One, because there was a a proliferation of signs coming to the planning commission that seemed to take an inordinate amount of time for uh and process for something as simple as a sign. And secondly, there was some um language in the code that I think was either outdated or potentially unenforceable based off the research that I've done. Uh unfortunately, the uh cost of that is that our current code is lacking in a path forward for businesses with multiple entrances. Um so currently, a large portion of our town is hypothetically existing non-conforming. Uh the code as written currently, as highlighted in the page here, shows that for parcels with two or more commercial uses on the parcel, one additional sign shall be permitted in addition to the above and may be used for any business directories, parcel identification and other purposes. I can't think of off the top of my head any commercial parcels in town that only have one business. Uh but I can, I know the majority of them have multiple businesses and uh have many more than just one additional sign to to accommodate them. So staff is looking for a direction from the planning commission on how to proceed with signs uh for multiple signs for properties that butt the right-of-way or things like the plaza where it's not two entrances to the right-of-way, but two entrances to the store itself. The options that I've come up with, but I'm obviously open to any suggestions from you guys, would be allow staff to approve second signs for businesses uh where there are unusual circumstances, uh direct staff to refer all second signs to the planning commission or direct staff to deny uh second signs for businesses and maintain a single sign per business. With that, I recu- I request you adopt the resolution as presented by staff and provide direction on how to proceed with second signs.
Okay, questions for staff?
Um now just to follow up with the previous review for us again?
Yes, indeed.
So what was what was the language that was left out regarding the second sign, the findings or or standards?
This whole section was removed.
Oh, this whole section was was taken out.
For planning commissions, but the the S U S, the piece that seems to affect us the most is the the B one number where additional business signs may be permitted for unusual circumstances, such as, but not limited to, business businesses that have entrances on multiple public right-of-ways. So the you can see the the current code has our table for standards for signs. The language is much different and only allows for one additional sign per parcel. At least that's the way that I read what's presented there in the table and doesn't have any recourse for referring a second sign to the planning commission. So when this was presented to me, I kind of went back and forth on how exactly to process it and ultimately decided to refer it to the planning commission with a request for direction.
Jake, if you could go back to where you just were with the table, if we look under location, it does say as close as possible to building entrances in which the related business is located. And in this particular case, would make me think if, let's for instance, say that we approved the sign facing Ocean, but uh did not allow for the sign within the the walkway of the plaza. I'm not sure how um customers walking by would know what that property was. So there's a a a basic sensible function um in that case. I I I would have two two questions for you that you you might be able to shed some light on and it it's just always such a challenge when the code is silent on specific things like this, right? My first question is, I mean, I know there's at least one precedent that I can think of where there are two signs. Right there also in the plaza, right there at Ocean and Mission. If if planning commission decided that two signs in this case would would be something they would like to recommend, would that in 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 your understanding and experience in town, would that be setting up a precedent where that could be understood in a way that would actually be detrimental to signage in town?
In my opinion, uh no, because you would still need to get a sign permit through the planning department if you wanted a second sign. And I think that uh depending on how the direction is to either take second signs back to the planning commission or have staff review them, I think it's pretty clear that the there's I don't know all the unusual circumstances, but most unusual circumstances would be for something like this where you have want the second sign in the courtyard so people walking in the courtyard of the plaza know what that business is. But I don't think that that would open the proverbial floodgates for second signs for every business. I don't think that a business that has one entrance on a on a street could use this rationale to try and have ten signs in front of their business. I think it would just be um it would just be for unusual circumstances. There's there's certain businesses that have come and approached the planning department in the past with requests for this where they have a business sign right at the entrance to their business. Um and then they've wanted one because they were in a courtyard closer to the street. Uh we do have some that already have this with like directory signage for parcels that um technically they you could kind of read it either way that they meet the code because the this code here states that they can have a second sign for a parcel if there's multiple commercial uses and actually calls out business directories. But we don't view directories as one sign. We view them as kind of multiple signs because it's one per business on the directory. So it's I I don't foresee there being a proliferation of extra signs per businesses. I think it would just be reserved for unusual circumstances. If there's any if it was allowed for staff to approve them, if there was any anything questionable, we would refer it to the planning commission.
And one one last question. Um Jake, thank you. Would if planning commission requested to review all applications for second signs, would the commission be seeing a lot of applications in a year?
I don't believe so. Um I've been with the city now for about a year and a half and uh this is, I think, my second or third request for a second sign. So no, I don't think it'd be uh there wouldn't be a flood of second signs coming to the planning commission, but it does seem like a a, in my opinion, a large amount of work for something that if it is something like this situation where it seems practical and sensible to have a second sign, it'd be easy for staff to say, yeah, that meets all the standards approved. And if it was something more complicated, we could refer it to you guys. And I I don't think it would be uh I think that there's merit both ways.
Okay, any other questions for staff? No questions. Alright, uh so I'm gonna invite the applicant. Are are you the applicant for this? You're the last man standing here, so like.
No, it's great. I I I very undertake. Um thank you, uh commissioners. Thank you, staff, specifically Mr. Lunder. Um as Jacob has said, we've kind of gone over this a bit, trying to figure it out. I do a lot of work um at the plaza. Uh my name is Matt Lightner. I'm with HGHB and I'm a representative for Brunello Cucinelli. All of the comments that you brought up are basically what I'm bringing up. It's that um there is an entrance, there's two different entrances. We want to make sure that the customers that are coming to the store know what store that they're going into. Um we believe it's a very discreet um and minimalist sign. Uh we are allowed six square feet and it's less than that. I want to say it's about maybe three and a half square feet per per sign. And so uh we think it's very responsible and referring it to you because uh the code is actually fairly clear that we can't have it and we just want to see how we can move forward. So um yeah, that's that's it for my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh anybody, any hands going up online? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comments, open up the commissioners for their discussion. Mr. Kaya Petkov, you have some comments about this?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm. Um if I heard correctly, that the sign is two and a half square feet. So it's not very high, I guess. It is it's long, it's almost seven feet long, but the letters are not very high. Okay.
Correct. I think that's
Okay.
About eleven-inch letters.
Yeah.
And uh total width is about six nine, but it's it instead of being a full-on wall-mounted sign, it's more like engraved letters into um siding.
Yeah, i- in in general, I think that it's a good policy to keep the number of signs to a minimum. We are it fits the character of Carmel, being subdued, not too much colorful advertising. But um we don't have that many stores that have double fronts, right? So so that's that's probably what's uh what's unique here. I'm not that concerned that people will not know what's in the store because there are these giant windows and there will be Brunello Cucinelli ten thousand times that you can see through the windows. So people definitely will know what's inside. But as a matter of policy, I think it's uh it's fair to allow a second sign if we have a separate storefront. It will appear on photography, I guess, advertising photography. When when they do advertising for the Carmel Plaza, they take pictures from the inside, from the outside. I think it's important for the brand awareness. And the assumption is that if they decide to abandon one of the stores and go back to one store, this second sign is gonna go away. So that is, yeah, that that that's fair. So I think I'm I'm okay with the second sign.
Commissioner Locke?
I agree with that. I think um yeah, in this case, it's particularly appropriate when you have combined two spaces on a corner and you have a door on each side of the building. Yeah, it it totally makes sense. I mean, our our Munich code talks about identifying the business entrance. So so multiple entrances, especially on corners, it would be appropriate. Um I think this, you know, I don't have a problem making that a determination of the director on this. Particularly if they follow the other guidelines or the other uh requirements of the code. In particular, this the consistency with the um building and the colors and that kind of thing.
Commissioner Allen?
Um Jake, can you pull back up the grid of the current? Um no, um.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so um so in this, it talks about the size of the lettering, right? Where did I see that? Oh, okay, so maximum letter size is ten inches. Is this ten inches?
It looks like a three and five eights.
Yeah, I I if you look at the I was looking over here and I could was kind of struggling reading it. But if you look at the uh TR one, it looks like three and five eights for the lettering. So it's pretty it's.
Oh.
Yeah, I thought I when I read over here, it looked like eleven, but I think that's just the poor resolution.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, it's a good good.
I heard it's eleven and I was like, wait, are we? Okay, so yeah, so I'm I'm good with two signs. Um and I do feel like um uh I in agreement with Commissioner Locke around the fact that um we should have something that allows this to um uh be uh able to be approved by the director and also um potentially looking at the future, um putting back in some of the language that has been removed, I would like to replace that.
Mr. Alborn?
Thank you, Chair. Uh yes, to uh the two signs for Brunello. Oh, and Chair, it's Cucinelli.
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 I probably butchered that.
You need to visit Salomeo.
I promise I'll never swing in.
So yes, to two signs for this for this business. Yes, to the previous comments from my fellow commissioners. And um please, yes, to let's lose the gray in the code. Let's get to some black and white, as Commissioner Allen mentioned. Let's let's not have this silent anymore, not just for us at the planning commission or for staff, but for businesses and designers who are trying to sort through this. Let's let's save time. Let's if we have a chance to to clarify the code, let's please do that. Thank you.
Okay, um clearly they need another sign. That's not really the issue. The issue is the code. So my my question is, um I mean, what needs to be done is you need to add some definition in the standards for, you know, some 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 standards that need to be met. And it seems to me it's pretty easy to add some objective standards to situations where they would need a second sign. Obviously, this is one. You have a second entrance, you know? So just those need to be put into the the standard so you can make the finding at staff level. My question is, is that gonna require a whole process of amending the code and draft presentation? Isn't that's what it requires, right?
That's an LCP amendment.
Yeah, so you can't you can't just uh we can't just give you direction to say, yeah, you you can do this, can we?
We do an interpretation based off of.
Based off of what? We gotta work off what's there.
Based off of planning commission's direction.
I mean, what do we what do we uh where do we where do we make this leap from the from the the part you you highlighted? For parcels with two or more commercial uses on the parcel, one additional sign shall be permitted in addition to the one to above and may be used for any business directories parcel. I mean, that's that's a that's another uh finding or or a standard. But you know, what we need to add is a standard that if the the business has more than one entry, that an additional sign. I mean, we could say if if they if they have if they have more than one entry, they can have only one additional sign. So if they could have like three, say they had more than than two entries, you know, what what the standard, I believe, should probably say is that it would be limited to two signs.
I think I think.
But I mean, you know, that's that's just a suggestion. So I mean, for it seems for staff to make that that determination, they're gonna have to do some amendment here.
I think in the long run, an amendment is exactly what's needed. I think in the short term, um there's potentially interpretation from the planning commission on what was pointed out earlier in the section of locations where it says entrances plural uh for the businesses and then where it says for parcels with two or more commercial uses on the parcel, one additional sign shall be permitted in addition to the above. We might be able to interpret that as one additional s- uh sign for the two or more commercial uses. So an additional sign per use, but even that still only seems to cover just the one sign per business on a parcel. So I think leaning into for the time being, uh the plural entrances would allow for, at least for the time being, maybe have the only unusual circumstance be abutting to uh right-of-ways or pathways if it's an inner block walkway.
Yeah, well, however you wanna you wanna do the language, but it the point I'm bringing up is that it seems like we need to get the uh the code amended so that we have a, you know, a clear standard.
Definitely.
And and obviously, in this case, they need a second sign. I mean, there's no there's no dispute here about that. We're we're talking about a problem with the code, you know? So um and and I assume it's 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 under the discretion of the planning commission to grant this additional sign? Can we do that? I mean, I wonder if we have the authority to do that. I mean, the code is not not really discretionary. It's it's but it but the planning commission does have the authority to interpret it. So what I would say is that location, the first uh standard, as close as possible to building entrances, which plural, so I I I would make the uh that the interpretation that that means that a second location can have a sign.
Yeah, I think that's the appropriate course for this one and then for other businesses that abut two right-of-ways and then we'll get on that code amendment ASAP.
Well, they're they're just really laborious and take a lot of time and I realize that. It takes a lot of staff time just to even do a simple sentence. You're looking at multiple meetings and multiple staff presentations. And uh so it's, you know, it it's a it's a it's a it's a big burden. Okay, uh in that case, uh we have resolution from staff to approve the second sign. So um let me motion we uh support that motion?
I'll also move that we accept staff's recommendation to approve a a sign permit for a second sign for the retail space of Brunello Cucinelli within Carmel Plaza.
Okay.
Very nice, sir.
Alright, with the finding that it's based upon location and the first standard. Okay, any further discussion? Alright, roll call, please.
Commissioner Alborn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaya Petkov?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage.
Yes, motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public hearings and brings us to the director's report.
Okay, I will do my best to fly through this. Okay, so um this week, City Council authorized the execution of the ODS PSA with Opticos. So there is a um brain is broken. There is a contract for two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and nine, two hundred and twelve, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars to prepare um the Objective Design Development Standards. Cheapers, Objective Development Design Standards.
You got you got it right first time.
One of them.
Objective Development.
Yes, um and that will focus um first on ADUs and then multifamily. The commission or the.
So that's just just for ADUs and multifamily?
Right, right, and those are two.
It's not gonna deal with any other any other
No.
type of residential development standards.
Right. It'll be used for those.
Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
Well.
The wrong business.
It's it it should be utilized for those that um uses that are by right uses. So where staff or the planning commission.
But this is to meet the ACD standards?
Yes, yes.
So we're.
It's part of the program for.
And so um so our our uh our ADU uh ordinance, our draft ordinance, is gonna be, this is gonna incorporate that into it?
We'll have to put in a um a placeholder and think of how to address it until such time that the ODS is is adopted for ADUs.
I just wonder if that's gonna hold up the ADU.
No, no.
Does does no, okay.
No.
Alright, that was my. All right, that's my question.
That's not the, uh at least from staff's per- pers- per Next item is Council received a presentation on the Mills Act program. Um council directed staff to return with the draft ordinance to delete the program from Title seventeen. That is another um L C P amendment. Um but present other incentives and um provide an update to proper, to the property tax spreadsheet to include all um contracted properties um for the tax year of twenty five, twenty six. Um so we're still under the current moratorium for a Mills Act contract and um but it it seems that the direction is to get rid of it entirely. Um there will be further explanation to um to City Council of are there any unintended consequences for for deletion of that program? Like, is it a policy in the L C P? No, that that wasn't part of the discussion this week. Um so that's ongoing. The council also adopted an urgency ordinance banning pickleball. Um but um also wanted to include the allowance of exploration of noise mitigation options, um not necessarily the sound barriers, but more of the type of paddles and balls that would be allowed. So currently, right now, if one would want to go play pickleball in the park, um you
So we're talking about nerve pickleball?
Yeah.
So we're going back to tennis?
Super quiet, yeah. I hear it's different, but
Do they have, is that such a thing?
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah. It's called a librarian, something librarian. Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
Um historical moment, last night, the um council also adopted a resolution on addresses, directing staff to return with a comprehensive street address program.
Always had one.
Um but council also directed um staff to to conduct additional community meetings. So the community is part of like rolling out the actual program that we have, apparently. Um council also made a motion of intent to adopt a revised water allocation policy resolution. Um and the the intent is to allocate a portion of the sixteen acre feet that we have and then return to discuss um what to do with the rest, including how to treat A D Us. The general manner manager for the Water Resources Agency submitted com- correspondence and also spoke. And Commissioner Locke, with her Monterey Peninsula Water Management District hat on, um joined the conversation and um provided some information as well. Um so the, so staff will be returning with um kind of a a half half of the direction that the planning commission gave. Um and then we'll um further discuss how to treat um A D Us and how much to give commercial. Right now, it's in the residential buckets. Um the uh new chief chair, he was to present on the emergency operations plan. And that unfortunately was continued. I think we went until like ten or ten thirty last night. So that should be coming back in November. Um as Commissioner Albor mentioned, on the twentieth, the planning commission will have a special meeting to discuss the housing element. Um I'll work with um Marnie and Brandon to make sure that that comes out earlier than possible. Um I unfortunately will not be in attendance, will not be here, and I won't be able to listen, so best of luck. Um I am still developing the director's referral list. Um that will be part of the agenda. Things like the um request for a parking study would be perfect to add onto that list. Um also, just to give the planning commission a heads up, um started it back in February and had to put it down, but I'm updating the staff report and resolution template and hope to have that done by the end of the year. But would like to present to, present that to the planning commission before the complete rollout, so you're not surprised when you get, you know, a staff report that only is only two pages and the resolution is like five pages. So to to get you guys up to speed on that. Um and that is all I have.
Okay, any questions for the director?
I have just one comment. On the referral for uh for the the potential referral on the parking program, um I think we also need to have a discussion on the in-lube parking.
Employee?
In-lube parking.
In-lube parking, okay.
And and just a clarification from me, I wasn't suggesting another parking study.
Right, it's a discussion.
I think we have lots to to review that have been done well.
Right, yes.
So more of a discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, and I love the idea of adding in in-lube.
Um I I was thinking about our discussion uh about the Brunelli Cucinelli sign and the fact that we're introducing housing num- house numbers. Will we come up with a standard defining the size or the maximum size of these numbers?
Fire code has a
My apartment does that?
Yeah.
They specify that.
So they can see it at night, so they wanna have like big ones?
They have, they have a size, they have to have contrast, they have to be split perpendicular to the property.
That comes to us from someone.
Pretty much their requirements are kind of the opposite of what we want, right? They they wanna have big, light signs, we wanna have small subdued.
No, they're not lighted. They weren't lighted, but they're like four inches.
Okay, good. Good to know. Okay. Uh and then in terms of format, uh was there any discussion about how many digits for the for the street numbers?
I believe it was one to four the most, maybe three.
Okay. Cause if we have to have numbers, we better do it like, you know, differently, Carmel style, so we have smaller digits. I I I don't understand when they put like five digits and, you know, they start with ten thousand fifty and they go to eleven thousand nine, i- it doesn't make sense.
There's standards for this. There's already a, a national system designed.
So if we can start with one
I don't think I have to worry about that.
I I believe that's the plan.
Okay, okay, everyone. We are joined. Thank you so much.
That's true.